I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on May 9th, 2019. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where Michael's at? So, I do have several amendments to tonight's agenda. Under Section 1, I would like that we add the Oath of Office for Linda Zeeman. Under Section 6, add IMB, the Proclamation for Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Weekend. And under the Mayor's Report, add the IMBoards and Committee Assignments for Councilmember Linda Zeeman-Elect and be the Mayor's Gala. But given that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
It's moving second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. We have an amended agenda. And first up, on our amended agenda, is administer the Oath of Office for Linda Zeeman. Dave? If you could raise your hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Linda Zeeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Position number three.
Position number three.
City of Lacey.
City of Lacey.
According to law.
According to the law.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. If you'd like, you'd come up and take your seat at the dais unless you'd like a couple minutes? Sure. We'll give Councilmember Zeeman just about five minutes, and then we'll re-adjourn the meeting. I'm going to open back up this Lacey City Council meeting. And next on our agenda is the approval of our Agenda and Consent Agenda items. Oh, we already did that, so next up is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is anyone wishing to address this council? You know what? We amended the agenda. I don't think we approved the Consent Agenda items.
So, I move the amended agenda and Consent Agenda items.
Second.
It's moving second to include the Agenda and the Consent Agenda items. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we have approved the Agenda and Consent Agenda items. Next up, we're in public comment period.
Hey, how's everyone doing? I'm Troy Kirby. Now, you may notice we're gopher-less this time for the pocket gophers. They got so excited after last year, they're digging holes right now. Saturday is our first game. It's at North Thurston High School. These are two of our owners. This is Trevor. This is Andrew. Say hi, both of you. Now, we know last year, you guys were so excited about the scarf that you gave it away to our sister city, correct?
I did, I did.
Okay, so we even brought you a scarf so this could actually go in the museum, as well as an additional scarf of what we have this year. So, you can actually give it to the sister city.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, so that way, because they do share our colors, apparently.
They do.
We didn't know that, so that was an exciting thing. So, this Saturday, we will have our first home game against Crossfire Premier. We're bringing out all the stops. We had over 1,000 people last year. We thank you guys for your support, as well as everyone else. I do want to mention that the video last year actually got 28,000 views on Facebook. We had people from like France actually excited about us, and I've never heard of France being that interested in Lacey, Washington, but that's great. But we are bringing out a double-barrel Gatling T-shirt gun this time that shoots 60 T-shirts in five seconds, 120 feet. We are insured, but you know, we do kind of want to mention that, and we just have a lot of fun. So, 5:30 PM on Saturday, North Thurston High School. And I'm a Timberline grad, this is a Timberline grad, this is a Capital grad. We are caring about the community and doing community things so kids don't have to go outside to the community. So, just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention, and thank you guys all for your help.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name's Jennifer. I'm one of your local adult services librarians located right next door at the Lacey Timberline Library. So, I don't know if you guys noticed the change in the weather, but summer library program is coming soon. So, and I know what you're wondering, what are we bringing this year? You can expect luchadors, watercolor painting, and astronomy. It's our theme this year is the Universe of Stories. Registration begins June 1st. You can register online or in person. You can, as you track your activities online or in person, you can collect prizes and grant entries for adults. You can get $100 gift cards, so we do have things for you guys to participate in. And then for children, you get a book, and then also a grand prize entry for new bike, coupons for free pizza, visiting Northwest Trek, visit the zoo. And there'll be additional drawings all throughout the summer for subscription boxes, tablets, and a $500 gift card for someone in the district, so that's going to be a lot of fun. And we would also like to thank the City of Lacey for your continued partnership and support of the special events in Huntermore Park that we get to do during the summer.
Right.
And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Richard.
Can you please state your full name? Good evening. My name is Richard Bukowski, and I had the pleasure or the honor of participating in the election process on Tuesday night. And it was a great experience, and whether or not the person that you wanted to win won or not, the way it's done, the system, we should all thank God that we live in America. It was done smoothly, and we really need to thank God that we live here. Funny thing, when I got into my car, I felt really optimistic about what went on. And when I feel optimistic, I always think about my little grandson. And then I also thought about Linda has two little boys, and Mr. Greenstein has six grandchildren, probably, I think, five of them are below the age of six, and thinking about their future. And I remember the question that Deputy Mayor Pratt asked us about, where's Lacey going to be in 15 or 20 years? And everybody gave pretty much, you know, stock answers. But then when I analyzed the question, and I thought about our representatives in Washington, DC, who tell us that there may not be a Lacey in 12 years, I was really excited because Deputy Mayor Pratt knows that we'll be here in 15 or 20 years, and that's a great thing. And as I told the City Council on Tuesday night, please remember, when you vote on any type of item, there are 50,000 people in Lacey. It's not about you, it's about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kelsey.
Hello. For the record, Kelsey Hulse with Puget Sound Energy. Thank you guys so much for giving me some time today. I just wanted to stop by and let you know that we are doing door-to-door home energy assessments right now in Lacey. Home energy assessment is essentially, we'll come in and look at your home from the attic to the crawl space, make recommendations for ways that you can make that home more efficient, help plug you in with rebates that Puget Sound Energy is offering to do those types of things. And then if folks would like their older light bulbs swapped out, they can get up to 30 light bulbs for free during that program as well. So, we've got that going on, started May, or yes, the 6th, and will be going on every Monday through the end of the month. And that's off Carpenter Road between Hicks Lake and Long Lake is the area that we're in right now, and we rotate around the community to different cities and different neighborhoods. Year after year, this is a program that's been going on for a very long time. Here in Lacey, our goal this time is to knock on 1,000 doors and to get 100 folks to sign up for those home energy assessments so we can help them make, help them make their homes a little more efficient. So, we're happy to be here, we're excited about the program, and just wanted to let you know that that was happening right here in your neighborhood. Thanks very much.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity tonight. My name is Isaiah Vimoto. For this forum, I'm wearing my hat as the chairman for the Lacey Polynesian Festival. So, that is event, really, that's coming up here in June 22nd. So, for the cost of the time, I'll cover, I'll kind of cover three things, who we are and what is that we're doing, also, a number three, kind of request to our city leadership. So, number one, who are we? We are a bunch of volunteers. So, myself and two other veterans, we planned this about three years ago. So, between the three of us, we have accumulated combined years, about 80 years, 80 years of federal service. So, and all three of us here live here in Lacey, it's a great community to live in. So, we thought and say, what can we do to give back to our community? We doned our service to our country and our nation, but what can we give back, do to give back to our community? We came up with this idea of a Lacey Polynesian Festival right here in our own town, because everybody has to go up there and see, in Tacoma or Seattle for a festival, but why can't we bring the same, the same environment here? So, and really, we're so thankful that we're able to do that this year. So, second is, so the festival now, we talk about 22 June, and that's, it's free to the public, it's open to the public, and it's going to be a great event, but I also want to highlight that our mayor has graciously accepted our invitation to be our guest speaker to open our ceremony that day, because this is, I was told by Parks and Recreation, that it's the first of its kind here in the city, and we look forward to that. We have about eight hours of solid performance that day. That's how many groups that we have sign up. We also have about over 10 vendors selling food. We also have over 10 vendors selling crafts, and we have a handful of vendors that will, informational booth. We have a lot of military presence there. We also have some military booths that will be there. We have groups on the base that will be performing as well. So, this is going to be a great event, and we encourage all of you guys to come out and support us in that event. I just wanted to keep in mind, I mean, I want you to know that this is all volunteer. So, most of the things that we've done for this festival up to this far, up this far, is all out of our pocket. We've, we just became a nonprofit organization. So, number three, I know my time is limited here. So, the third thing I ask, you know, to our City Council, if there's any way, one of the challenges that we face, not a challenge, we're going to do it, if there's any way we can waive the park fees, you know, for this event, because we're doing this for our community, you know, and we're not making any money out of this, this is all out of our pocket, doing this for our community. So, all I'll ask for is, you know, to say, the City Council and the Mr. Mayor, if there's any way we can waive that park fee, it was about $1,500, you know, we appreciate that. Thank you.
And this festival is going to be at the Regional Athletic Complex?
Yes, sir. And that's going to be at the Regional Athletic Center. And also, I put these flowers up here, and also my, you know, our business card up here for those of you who are not aware of it, so when you decide to come out, but really, it's going to be a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on the items not on the agenda? Seeing none? Our next item is proclamations. And first up is the Bicycle Commuter Month. And as we usually do, we'll get started down on the end.
We added a line, I think.
Yep. Read from the printed one.
So, does Linda know that she's reading, okay?
And is somebody taking Councilmember Stedman?
Sure.
All right, we'll start. City of Lacey proclamation. Whereas transportation accounts for about a third of the energy use in Washington State and about half of our CO2 emissions from fossil fuel, and?
Whereas bicycling is one of the most energy-efficient and non-polluting forms of transportation ever invented, and is a mode of transportation well-suited to urban environments where trips are short in length and overly congested roads are difficult and costly to expand, and?
Whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, parking problems, and traffic congestion, and?
Whereas bicycle commuting makes people healthier and more productive through exercise, and?
Whereas the City of Lacey has adopted a new pedestrian and bicycle plan to prioritize and encourage bicycle and pedestrian trips by providing a safe, well-connected, and convenient bicycle and pedestrian circulation network throughout the city. And whereas the City of Lacey encourages and supports pedestrian and bicycle facilities through our development standards, and?
Whereas inner-city transit with many sponsors, including the Capital Bicycle Club and local regional businesses, is hosting the 32nd Annual Bicycle Commuter Challenge during the month of May 2019. Now, therefore, in recognition of the 62nd National Bike Month, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, and on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2019 as Bicycle Commuter Month in the City of Lacey, and I encourage all citizens to consider using active transportation modes when possible. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, May 9th, 2019. If someone?
So, for the record, I'm Duncan Green. I represent inner-city transit and the Bicycle Commuter Challenge. We ask the cities and county to proclaim May as Bike Commute Month, and so we're, I'm basically just here to say thanks. The proclamation really says all the important things about why bicycling is good for individuals, for our community, and for our planet, really. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Ryder, and the commission, or, sorry, the members for council for proclaiming May as Bike Commute Month in the City of Lacey. And May is also National Bike Month, and there are activities happening all over the country this May to celebrate and promote bicycling as a means of transportation, including our local Bike Commute Challenge and our local edition of National Bicycle to Work Day, which is this next Thursday, May 16th, and we'll have seven Bike Commuter And we'll have seven bike commuter stations scattered around Thurston County where you can stop on your way to work for a coffee and a doughnut and bicycling information. And some of the stations will actually have a bike mechanic on hand if you need a little something repaired. And you can find out all about the Bicycle Commuter Challenge and Bike to Work Day at our website, bccintercitytransit.com. Washington State has again retained its number-one position as the most bike-friendly state in the nation. It's for the ninth year in a row. And that's due in large part to the efforts of municipalities like Lacey, making efforts to improve bicycling in our communities, like the new bike pedestrian plan and new bike corridor, I think is the proper terminology for the bikeway that runs north and south, just east of College Street, a little bit south of here. I just rode on it the first time yesterday, and it was quite pleasant. So the Bicycle Commuter Challenge is, for 32 years, has been encouraging people to try using their bikes for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And our website that I mentioned makes it really easy and fun to participate. Just create an account on the website and log your miles, and you can win great prizes. And there's also teams, which friendly and sometimes kind of fierce competition between the teams keep people itching to log their trips. And I've heard that the City of Lacey has a really great team picking up the pace this year, so I encourage you to check that out and possibly join the City of Lacey team in the, in the BCC. Our sponsorship program also benefits the local economy by involving over 40 sponsors, most of which are local businesses, and they help us reward our participants with coupons, free passes, and prizes for getting involved. Last year, in the month of May alone, the participants in the BCC collectively logged about 90,000 miles on their bikes, about 14,000 trips, reducing CO2 emissions by an estimated 45 tons. That's just the people that were in the, in the event just for one month. So we're actually making a difference, and we hope you'll join us. And it's looking like another great year for the Bicycle Commuter Challenge. Just want to say thanks, everybody.
Right, thank you. So next up is our proclamation for Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Weekend.
City of Lacey proclamation. City of Lacey proclamation with the mic on. Whereas in May of 1984, women from across the nation participated in the first U.S. Women's Marathon Olympic Trials in the South Sound Region encompassing Lacey, Tomwater, Olympia, and Thurston County, and?
Whereas the South Sound Region exhibited to the nation our community spirit, technical organizing expertise, welcoming hospitality, and the heart of more than 4,000 volunteers to produce a week of activities for our citizens and guests, and?
Whereas the trials route followed city streets, including College Street, 45th Avenue, Ruddle Road, and Lacey Boulevard, and trial athletes stayed at Lacey, in Lacey at St. Martin's University, and?
Whereas Lacey collaborated with intercity transit to provide parking and shuttle locations, spruced up streets and sidewalks, provided safety services with police, fire, and public works personnel, and participated in year-long event planning and coordination activities,
Whereas Joan, the Olympic Trial Legacy Committee will host several events in May, celebrating women in sport, women as leaders, and the women of the 1984 trials, and whereas Joan Benoit Samuelson, winner of the trials and the winner of the 1984 Women's Marathon at the Olympic Games in Los Angeles, along with other women who participated in the 1984 trials, will return to the region to mark the 35th anniversary, and?
Whereas the Capital City Marathon Association, which continues today to annually provide healthy running opportunities for more than 2,200 runners, and is supported by local businesses, governments, and over 500 volunteers, will celebrate the 1984 trials during its marathon, during its May Marathon Weekend. Now, therefore, in recognition of the contributions of our communities to the first Women's Marathon Olympic Trials, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, proclaim May 17 through the 19th as, 2019, as Women's Olympic Marathon Trial Celebration Weekend in the City of Lacey, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the spirit of volunteerism and service that lives on. And?
Please. And I would like to speak after, if that's okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the proclamation this evening. My name is Judy Hartman. I'm the president of the Capital City Marathon Association. Judy Hoefling was hoping to be here tonight with me, who is working with the Trials Legacy Committee but is not able to. I would just like to say a couple words about why we wanted to do some proclamations. We're in the business of trying to tell our story and the fact that the service and the volunteerism that came to, and cooperation that really came to the fore in preparing for the Marathon Trials lives on today. And I think we are really blessed to live in the communities in which we do, just like with your bicycle resolution. We want, we want healthy communities for our residents. And this is one way that we are trying to make that contribution. Just a word about Lacey. Lacey was so critical to the success of the trials 35 years ago. Mr. Brown is here this evening. He and his wife were hard workers for a year-plus leading up to that. And he tells great stories about the cooperation of the various entities within the City of Lacey and with the other entities in the county. It was, it was a heroic effort with volunteers that painted the room, hotel, dorm rooms at St. Martin's and did the landscaping outside and put up arches and just really made this a very welcoming place. And that's why so many people from the trials, we expect over 40 this weekend, or this coming weekend. So thank you very much. The other just thing I'd like to say is that Lacey continues, or groups in Lacey continue to benefit from our work in that we are an all-volunteer organization, which allows us to put some money aside, and we provide grants to school teams and to community organizations. So for instance, this last year, the Lacey Kiwanis got a grant for a project, and Mountain View Elementary got a grant for a project. So we try to give back to our communities in which we run as well. So thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. And I know the deputy mayor has a few words.
I do. So what is often overlooked is the connection of the Olympic Women Trials and Marathon to the passage of Title IX, or what is called the Equity, Opportunity, and Education Act, which was signed into law in 1972. And basically, it states, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under education, any education program or activity receiving federal financial aid." And while this was and is often thought this applies to girls and women's sports and athletics, it actually is pretty far-reaching. When I was in high school, many, many, many years ago, we certainly were encouraged to take sewing and home economics, but we certainly weren't expected to be interested in or even take shop and auto mechanics. While we had to have science and math to graduate, we certainly were never counseled to make a career in science, technology, engineering, or math. And I just went to a dedication at St. Martin's for their new science building, which would, back in my day, would be filled with men. But instead, today, there are a whole lot of women who are graduating in these fields. So the Olympic Trials Legacy Committee wants, wants to invite people to their luncheon and dinner, which is on May 17th, to celebrate the 35th year point in time that occurred here in 1984, the first Marathon Trials. And by the way, I stood out on Riddle Road with my 14-year-old daughter, and she is a person that runs long distance with my grandchild now. It made a big impression. So, but it has its ties, so besides that point in time, the first Marathon Trials, it has its ties to equity in education opportunities. And the luncheon at the RL Hotel, or the Red Lion, at 11:30, we'll have a keynote speaker, Jacqueline Hansen, who will speak on the right to run, right to vote. And she was one of the ones who lobbied to get the, or was the one who lobbied to get women's marathons in the Olympics. And will, she will highlight the 1984 Trials in this area. And the dinner also, May 17th, for the Legacy Committee, is also at the Red Lion at 6:30. And both of these events will have many of the runners that ran in the Trials. And the dinner will honor Joan Benoit Samuelson, who won obviously the first Women's Olympic Marathon in Los Angeles in 84. And so those tickets are at the Olympic Trials Legacy Committee website. It's, make sure you say Olympic Trials Legacy Committee to get on the website. And then I think you, the council has been handed out an invitation to a reception, May 17th, held at the Columbia Room in the Washington State Capitol Building, and you should have it someplace. And then May 18th, which unfortunately I can't go to because I have something else, is the Capital City Marathon Dinner. And you can go on their website to get tickets too. So it's a big event, and I think it's extremely important, not just for runners and athletes, but for women in general. So thank you.
And thank you. Looking forward to it. Brings back a lot of memories, and I remember for years and years, used to see the outline of the route they took. And so, and it was around for a long time, it was always, always, always great to see. And I remember, I was younger, quite a bit younger back then when this was happening, but I remember all the commotion and all, everyone and the trials happening. It was a really, you know, a big deal here in the City of Lacey. It sort of, you know, put us on the map, the national map, the world map. So I'm really looking forward to, for the weekend. So next up on our agenda is resolutions. Short-term air fund loan resolution. Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, and welcome, Councilmember Zeeman. I apologize, one of the first actions asked of you is to authorize a loan in case we have a shortfall, shortfall in cash. I assure you that the city's finances are very strong, and this is very short-term in nature. This is really a proactive action or an insurance policy in case we have a cash flow issue within one of our capital funds. We certainly don't want to have a negative cash in any of our funds. There's really two circumstances that are driving this need. One, this is a very new, a very new fund. As you know, the voters approved the Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax in 2017, so we haven't had a lot of opportunity to build up a cash reserve. And this really isn't a fund that's intended to have large cash reserve. This isn't an operating fund, so really spending it, you know, from year to year as fast as we collected on capital projects. The other issue is this is our second year of construction for this fund, and we're projected to build a project that's about three times bigger than we anticipated in any given year, coming in at 6.5 million. This is for the College Street and Yom Highway Rehab Project. This does include a $4.2 million loan or a grant, and it's really an indication and representation of, you know, our transportation engineering staff and their ability to secure these funds. But of course, it causes my department and myself problems in trying to make sure that that's funded. So we did receive a National Highway Performance Grant, again, 4.2 million. Like most grants, this is on a reimbursement basis. So this means that the city needs to incur the original expense, submit a reimbursement to the federal government, and then we have to wait for that reimbursement to come in. And that's really what we're talking about, is that time gap between the time we incur the expense and the time that we actually receive the reimbursement from the federal government. So I do anticipate it to be short, if at all. It really just depends on how fast the construction, construction occurs. It's very likely that we may not need this loan at all, but I, I do, do recommend that we do have this insurance policy in place. So the resolution before you tonight authorizes loans from the Arterial Street Fund to the Transportation Improvement Fund with the following terms. It'll have a maximum loan amount of 2 million. The term is less than one year, although I expect that to be more closer to weeks than a year. And the interest rate that we will use is the 13-week Treasury Bill. That's about a three-month interest rate. And just for information, today's rate was about 2.4%. That obviously may change by the time we get to the summer construction season. And the loan authorization will expire at the end of this year, so it'll only be good through 2019. We anticipate construction be complete during this construction season. In fact, the grant requires that, so we'll definitely have that done for the end of the year. So the action requested of you tonight is to adopt the resolution, thus authorizing the short-term loans.
Move to approve resolution authorizing short-term loans from the Arterial Street Fund to the Transportation Improvement Fund.
Second. It's been moved in second to adopt this resolution, authorizing short-term loans from the Arterial Street Fund to the Transportation Improvement Fund. Is there any questions?
As a matter of perspective, Troy, could you remind the council what our bond rating is these days?
AAA. It's as high as it will go. So again, we expect this cash situation to be very short-term and is not indicative of our financial condition.
And part of that rating has to do with our, our level of debt, which is what? And, and how does that contribute to the bond rating?
Our outstanding debt at the end of 2018 was about $9.5 million, well below our statutory maximum. I think it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. You know, so we're in, again, very good financial condition.
Thank you.
Great. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution, authorizing short-term loans from the Arterial Street Fund to the Transportation Improvement Fund. It's Resolution Number 1074. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next up is the mayor's report. I have a couple sort of housecleaning items to discuss. The first one is, obviously, we have a new council member, and congratulations again, Councilmember Zeeman. And so when, Councilmember Young was given committee assignments at the beginning of the year, and since then, I know that Councilmember Cox has taken over a couple of those, and, and I know you, there's just one, it's a H.
Yes, double HSC.
Double HSC. And so you've actually been selected by this council to be the primary for that, so you'll stay the primary for that. But the other committee assignments would be for Councilmember Zeeman to be on the Community Relations Committee and Utilities Committee, and I know she was the chair of the Utilities Committee, to be on the Economic Development Council.
There's she.
And? What's the only one?
Thurston Thrives.
Oh. Then on the other side, it's Thurston Thrives. So I'm not sure, I know Councilmember Cox, you've been going to Thurston Thrives?
No, it's me.
Or you've been going to Thurston Thrives?
Yeah.
So my suggestion is that we keep these assignments the same that Councilmember Young had up, up till now, and that you take over. Except for HSC, we've already changed that officially by the, with the council.
One other question, did you, I only heard two of the council committees, probably a third one, no?
Right now, it only shows that she was on the Community Relations Committee and the Utilities Committee.
Okay, I thought, I thought the way it worked out with the numbers that everybody was on three, okay.
Yeah.
I thought originally Councilmember Young was on transportation, and that got changed, or was that last year?
Oh, yeah, maybe, I'm not sure.
As long as they're all covered, that's fine.
So I can give, of course, a copy of this to Councilmember Zeeman, and, but I would like a motion to approve the new intergover, committee and intergovernmental boards and commission assignments to Councilmember Zeeman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, Councilmember Cox?
Well, the thing that they haven't brought up is the assignments as alternate, because what Rachel and I did was we flipped roles on the CIP HHSB. I had been her alternate, and I became the lead. So there are also things that Rachel was alternate on as well to be considered.
Yes.
I had talked to Councilmember Stedman. I was trying to figure out a way we could not add to anybody else's load but give them. I was trying to figure out a way we could not add to anybody else's load, but give her a little bit of grace to get her feet on the ground. He goes already to the Community Action Council meetings quite regularly. He is a citizen member of that, and I represent council in that group as well. So we have some redundancy there. If we were to make Mike our Lacey council representative there, that would allow me to take one of these other assignments, if you desire that, and if council and mayor are willing to do that. Can you look and see what her alternate?
So she, she'd be the alternate on HHSB, and the alternate on Thurston Regional Planning Council. And that's it.
And that's it, okay.
So you'd like to add anything to this, Councilmember?
I'd like to thank Councilmember Cox for her graciousness, and, and I really would appreciate that, as I learn this job and try to do my best to get my feet under me, as you said. So thank you.
So is there a, a council assignment that you think you will not be able to make, Councilmember Zeeman, that you'd like?
Do you, do you know what times and dates these are? This is the other question.
2:00 AM.
I have looked over the calendar, and what I think would best work with my schedule as of now is perhaps allowing Councilmember Cox to take Thurston Thrives, and, and I would be happy to do the others.
Okay. Well, so if that's okay with Councilmember Cox?
I've been trying to go to those meetings anyway, so I don't think, I guess my only sadness would be leaving the CAC, but I think we're well represented there with Mike, and...
So the, the motion would be to have Councilmember Stedman be the, the delegate to the Community Action Council with Councilmember Cox as the alternate, and, and then Councilmember Cox be the primary on Thurston Thrives, and Councilmember Zeeman be the alternate. Can I get a motion?
Well, wait, wait. Isn't the deputy mayor the alternate on Thurston Thrives?
Oh, okay.
But that would be okay if she wants to be the alternate.
That's fine.
Okay. Are you saying you have enough to say grace over deputy mayor?
So there's already a motion, tell me how you want to...
Yeah, there is a motion.
Yeah, so can be a friendly amendment to that motion, or how do, how do we do that?
Can we withdraw the motion and start over? It might be easier.
You could, well, yeah, you could withdraw the motions.
So I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, so we can start that over.
Okay. So...
I'm not sure what we just did, but...
Exactly. So there's no motion on the table. The new motion would be for, for Councilmember Zeeman to be the, the primary on the Economic Development Council, on the Community Relations Committee, the Utilities Committee, and the alternate on Thurston Thrives, and Councilmember Stedman be the primary on the Community Action Council, with Councilmember Cox be the alternate. And that is all the changes we'd need.
No, with me being Thurston?
With Councilmember Cox being the primary on Thurston Thrives, and...
I have a quick before you go on, okay?
And, and, and Councilmember Zeeman be the alternate. That's the motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Which I'm fine with, but if she needed to have an, does, I go to Thurston Regional Planning Council in my role as a representative of Lot, so I'm always there. So if you need an alternate, that is a potential as well, so I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm TRPC lead.
Yeah.
Alternate.
Yeah, she'd be the alternate.
Alternate, okay, sorry, okay.
We're good.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Is there any issue, so Councilman Stedman, who is now going to have CAC, is already there as, as?
A citizen rep? Is that what he's there as now?
Yes.
Is there any issue with that? Because he's not going to be able to vote twice, so is that, is that going to lose a voting position for the city?
No.
Because he can't vote twice, he can't vote for both, in both positions on the, on the council.
Actually, former mayor, virtual Clarkson, is a citizen member as well, but they don't count as citizen of, as City of Lacey votes, they count as citizen votes.
Right, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you can't, you wouldn't be able to vote as a citizen and as a council member, though.
So they'd be, they'd lose...
The council vote.
So they would have to get a new citizen vote to replace him?
Actually, we have a new citizen of Lacey who is about to join our board, one Lisa Simko.
Oh.
Okay, so then it won't, it won't have a problem with it then? Okay.
That's nice, yeah.
Perfect, that was my concern. And then the other question I had is, you're going to have, I mean, you already have a huge load. Are you okay with that? Because that's going to give you, what? Six committees that you're...
I swapped one out for the other.
So you're still going to have five?
I won't have CAC anymore.
Right, so you'll be adding, okay. As long as you're okay with that, because that's more than everyone else has, that's why I'm asking.
And I think we're, this is only till the end of the year, and once we seat the new council in January, I think we can maybe equalize things a little bit, but, yeah.
Yep, that's the point.
If you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Well, I've got, I've got more bandwidth than most of you do in terms of time in my day, so I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you. I also wanted to just confirm, Deputy Mayor is going to be the alternate on TRPC, and I'm still going to be the alternate on HHSB, correct?
That's correct.
Can I do that? I think I can.
Who's the alternate on Thurston Thrives?
Right now, you would be alternate on, on the Thurston Regional Planning Council.
I still am, okay.
Yeah. But we, they're always covered because they both go to Thurston Regional Planning Council, so there's be very few times you would need to step in.
So then Deputy Mayor will remain our alternate on Thurston Thrives?
I, I, uh, no, yes?
Well, I, I just made the...
I thought that was you. I thought that was you, it's...
I believe Councilmember Cox is the primary, and I'm the alternate on Thurston Thrives.
Okay, so that's a change in your assignments.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to put together a new chart and send it out to everyone?
Yeah. I think we just went through everything, and we're right, but we'll, we'll get a new chart and send it out to everyone.
Well, so it gives everybody an idea of how busy council members are.
Great. And it's great, and Councilmember Stedman's not here, and we can just make him do it, and he has nothing to say about it.
Motion is he takes it?
We did talk about it, and he's happy to do it, so, yeah.
So there, there was a motion, and there was a second? Who's the, who's the second? That's right.
I think I, I don't remember either.
You got?
There's a motion in the second line.
Motion is second. All in favor of the new 2018 council assignments? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We made it through.
Can anyone repeat what they have?
You got that?
I'll check with Perry.
She's typing quick.
Okay, and so the, the next item under the mayor's report is, May 30th of this month is our second mayor's gala, which is a fundraiser to support our Lacey Veteran Services Hub. And this year, we're holding the gala at South Pierce Sound Community College, Lacy's campus, which is very close here. You can get tickets on our website. It's right on our, on the, when you go to our City of Lacey website, ci.lacy.wa.us. It says Mayor's Gala on the left-hand side there, and you can click on there and, and get your tickets. And I, last time I checked, the, the tickets are going really fast. And so if you are interested in coming to the Mayor's Gala and, and supporting just a wonderful cause, please go on, go online and secure your seats as, as soon as possible. And so again, that's May 30th of this month. It's going to be a, a great time and a great cause, and so I encourage you to, to get your tickets as soon as possible. And that is my mayor's report. City manager, do you have a report?
I have no report.
So next up is standing general committees.
There's two on there, including finance.
There's two, but I don't have it on my...
The standing general committee.
Finance and general government.
Yeah.
We don't have a general committees.
Oh, here they are. Okay, yep. And so first up is the, the Finance Committee, and I chaired the committee on April 23rd. We mostly went over our 2019 budget amendment updates. The significant budget amendments that we have identified since the adoption of our 2019 budget is the Family Support Center of the South Sound Contract in support of Sidewalk, Homeless Services. This is a, a sort of an emergency where Sidewalk came to us. They were in a situation where their cash balances were really tight, and they have been offering services at our Lacey Veteran Services Hub through a award that we had given through a CBDG grant. And that grant ended, and yet they, they continued to give those services. And so we, we would really want them to continue to provide those services. And so Lacy agreed to support Sidewalk to do that. And so that was a, a, a budget amendment. We also had a, a Police Department Salaries and Benefits Amendment. We had a Phase Two of the Indoor Sports Facility Feasibility Study, a Park Sponsorship Recommendation Implementation, the Trail Depot MND Construction, the, the Rack Baseball Netting Replacement, the 2017 Waterline Replacement Project, and the development of a Utility Capital Improvement Program Efficiency Analysis and Improvement Plan, and a Street Sweeper Operator and Grant Administration. This was something we've been waiting for, for a while, and it was in the capital budget, finally came through. So we finally were able to do this budget amendment, and I think we've got, got that ordered. Is it here or on its way? It's here? How is it?
Well, it takes a lot to outfit it.
It's, it's on its way, it'll be on the street soon?
Yes.
So hopefully we'll see a brand-new street sweeper out there soon, so...
He'd be working on it now, but he's here.
The additional budget amendments reports will be presented as needed, and the final approval of the proposed amendments will be considered by the full council in September when we do those amendments. Then we talked about our 2019 first quarter financial report. As of March 31st, the total general fund expenditures, everything was, basically came in as expected. Although the first quarter expenditures categories show some variance from the previous year, only the most significant variance were described. And, for example, the Contracted Services Department expenditures increased by a little over $100,000 compared to 2018, and this was attributed to the timing difference compared to 2018. And the Thurston County Voter Registration Services of 73,000, that's a, was a timing issue. There was an increase of a couple hundred thousand that occurred to, in the Police Department during the first quarter, and this is attributed to inflationary increases to labor costs and an upfront full-year payment of 147,000 as a negotiated benefit. We also had the Capital Equipment Fund experienced almost a $300,000 increase, and that's primarily due to the city's economic development investment of 195,000 in the Lacy Maker Space during the first quarter. And as of March 31st, the general fund revenues were about 19% of the adopted budget. Last year, the same time, revenues were around 20% of the budget, so very similar. And so everything is really kind of going on like we predicted. The economic strength continues in 2019. We're having another really good year when it comes to our sales tax collection. A lot of that has to do with the, the continued strong commercial building that happened in northeast Lacy. We've seen a lot of construction go on out, out there, and along with some multifamily that are, are as new. And so the 2018 year finished with 182 single-family resident permits, which is just about 1% higher than the 2017. But the, the new construction, you know, it really affects the general fund's largest source of tax revenue, because it provides immediate sales tax revenues in addition to, and it's an indication of future property and utility tax growth as well. But fortunately, the commercial and industrial construction activity, it continues to be very strong. Construction activity in 2019 should remain strong, but we're seeing about '20, '20, '21, it could experience a slowing of the commercial and industrial development. We're just running out of those buildable lands. And especially when we've seen a lot of the big warehousing coming in northeast Lacy, there's some great jobs going on there, but they take up a lot of land as well. So that was that report. We just talked about the, the short-term inter-fund loan resolution, and the, the last thing we discussed was there, we had just recently confirmed that there is a BNO tax exemption for manufacturing and wholesaling. It's something that we've done in practice for a long time, but we realized we didn't have it in ordinance. And so we, I think it's been a couple months ago, we, we put that into an ordinance form, so we're, we're matching our, our standard practice with our actual ordinance. But the big question was, is, well, how much BNO tax are we, are we losing, or are we, are we not collecting because we have a BNO tax exemption for manufacturing and wholesaling? And so George Smith took a look at that data, and it was actually more difficult to find that information than you would think. You'd think the department revenue would have that category, you can just match up, you know, sales tax and BNO tax. It didn't end up being that easy at all, and so he had to do some, some guestimation. But through a lot of, so hard work, he sort of estimated that the total collection, if we didn't exempt BNO tax for manufacturing and wholesaling, wouldn't really be more than $65,000. So it, it wasn't a huge source of, of revenue for the city that we're, we're not realizing. And so that is my report. Next up is the General Government and Public Safety Committee, Deputy Mayor.
So the General Government and Public Safety Committee also met on April 23rd, and we had a update from our building official, Wade Duffy, and Deputy Chief Ryan Cox from Lacey Fire District III about our Washington State Rating Bureau survey results. And the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau, or WSRB, recently evaluated and updated their rating for the city of Lacey to a Community Protection Class, or PC, grade of three, which is great. Out of 677 communities in Washington State, the city is ranked in the top 8%, or top 53. And so no communities have received a grade of one, and only five communities receive a grade of two. The, the other thing is, the ratings are used by the insurance companies to help determine fire insurance premiums for properties. So it's really great that we've got a really good rating. And the WSRB determines the protection class grading of cities and fire protection districts by evaluating their fire protection slash suppression capabilities using a schedule approved by the Washington State Office of the Insurance Commissioner. And it evaluates on three major areas: water supply, fire department, emergency communications, and fire safety. And then there's a grade of 1 through 10, so we, as I said, we received a 3. The city of Lacey received a Community Protection Class of grade 3, which is pretty significant in staff's viewpoint. And then we also talked about public records activity, and a ESHB 1594 requiring local government agencies with staff and legal costs associated with filling, fulfilling public records requests totaling 100,000 during the prior fiscal year report to the Joint Legislative Audit, Audit Report Committee, or JLRK, on 18 different public records metrics. And this was adopted in 2017, so we were giving a report of what we did. And on June 28th, 2018, the city contracted with a public records request management software, or it's called GovQA, to provide, one, an online portal to simplify the requesting process to the public, two... to the public, two, an integrated system for staff to respond to requests, and three, comprehensive data tracking and reporting to help ensure compliance with the new state mandate. And this, apparently the software has really been helpful because we get a lot of public records requests. The city received 1,303 public records requests between June 28th, 2018 and December 31st, 2018. And so, and it really takes, those requests could be anything from a few pages to, you know, a very large stack of information. So staff provided information on the most common records requests and the top five requests by volume and the longest ongoing public records requests to date. So we had a, a review of that. And let's see, is that it? I think that is my report. Wait, no, my page didn't turn. Okay. The committee requested staff provide an update at a future committee meeting on the 2018 JLRK report, specifically what the city's 2018 costs were to respond to public records requests. And then the last thing we talked about is the Port of Olympia Interlocal Agreement. And on November 9th, 2017, the City Council approved an interlocal agreement with the Port of Olympia, which called for the city to provide half the cost of a market study, up to a total of 10,000 for, from each party. And the cost of the market study will be 25,000, split evenly between the partners. It is necessary to request that the City Council authorize the additional 2,500 amount to be paid. And since the entire amount specified in the ILA is 2,000, 210,000, the council is requested to, it's requested that it go before the council. And this motion was approved to move it forward. And I don't believe we've seen it yet, so. And that's my report.
Thank you. Before we go on to Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports, I'd just like to recognize our Vice Chair of Plan Commissions here. Thank you for being here, Sharon. So Boards, Commissionary Committee Reports, I'm up first. The Mayor's Forum met last Friday in Tumwater. And a, a big part of our conversation that we had was the, the recent meeting that the city of Lacey had with our, our County Commission. The County Commission met earlier in the week with the, the city, full city council up at the county courthouses. And we went over through, through several items of mutual concern. But prior to that meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with the Chair of the County Commission, Commissioner Hutchings. And just to go over, you know, a couple items that was going to be on the agenda and just to sort of catch up. And it was a really good conversation that we had. One thing that we sort of realized as we were talking through some several different issues is that we just did not communicate with our County Commission or I haven't been communicating with even with the Chair of the County Commission as much as we really need to, considering how many mutual issues that we have. And so there was, used to be an opportunity at the, at the Mayor's Forum, the County Commissioners, the Chair of the County Commission used to attend those meetings and the Chair of the Port of Olympia were, would attend those meetings. That was changed. Geez, I don't remember when it was. Maybe it's been over a year ago. But I, I spoke to the, the rest of the mayors who, who were there. And I, I said that I, I really think we should have the Chair of the County Commission be a part of the Mayor's Forum meetings again. Maybe not every month, because there are some times that, you know, the mayors get together, talk about some issues that we want to talk through, that we want to work with the county on, and we, we go over them and talk them through. But we really need to get back, at least every other month, having the, the Chair of the County Commission there just to make sure there's no miscommunication going on between the cities and the county. And I, I think by not having the, the Chair of the County Commission there, it, it, in some ways, it feels like we have isolated the county from the, the normal business that we're, we're doing in here in Thurston County and as between cities and the county. And I don't think that has been good for anyone. And so I suggested that we, we asked that the County Chair come back and attend those at least every other month. And everyone at the, who was there also thought that would be a good idea. And so we'll be reaching out to Commissioner Hutchings and, and try to get him on the schedule so he's at least there, you know, half the year. We meet every month. And so half the time, the Chair of the County Commission will hopefully be there going forward. And so that was a, a big part of, of that conversation at the Mayor's Forum. The Transportation Policy Board met yesterday morning bright and early at 7:00 AM, which was difficult because we're here till pretty late, going through the process to select our, our new council member. And I had to wake up the next morning and be there at 7:00 AM, so I kind of walked in there as a zombie. But there was a couple things that we discussed. We've been out without a business representative on the Transportation Policy Board for a while because we turned the, the former business representative into an emeritus position. And so, and so we need to figure out a new way to get a, a, someone who's from the business community as a representative, as a business representative to the Transportation Policy Board. So if you are a business and you're interested in the transportation in Thurston County, please go to the Thurston Regional Plan Council's website and there'll be some information there for you to apply for this business rep. And so I appointed actually a subcommittee to go through applications and, and go through that process. We also discussed, yep?
Just a suggestion, you might want to reach out to the chambers.
Yeah.
They should be able to help you find a business owner like that.
That's a good idea.
That's, that's great. And of course, I'd love to see a, a Lacey business owner be, be there as well. So we'll make sure we reach out to the, the Lacey South Sound Chamber and the, the Thurston Chamber. And so I, and if, of course, if you're a business and you're interested, please look to apply. So, but thank you for the suggestion. So the next item we talked about is we're going to have another retreat. And so we talked about items that we would like to see that were, that we could discuss and take a deeper dive into at our retreat. And the, the, the Policy Board, I think, gave a pretty good list of, of things we would like to see. The, the one thing that I have been talking about for a while is how, how is technology really going to play a major part in our transportation? We're seeing more and more autonomous vehicles and driverless, you know, driverless vehicles. We've seen talks about how, how packages will be delivered and everything else. And it's really going to, I think, change the way we think about transportation in this country, which begs the question, is, is this region ready for that transformation? And we're actually going to have our next meeting in June be here in Lacey at our Lacey Community Center. And we're going to be speaking to the Washington State Representative who's been focusing on this issue. And we're going to have a whole presentation about technology and autonomous vehicles and, and what jurisdictions and, and regions need to do to get ready for that change. And so that's going to be really exciting to hear next month. The, the rest of the meeting was really talking about the, the Regional Climate Mitigation Plan, which is a, a, a plan that Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, and Thurston County is working along with the Thurston Regional Plan Council to develop this regional climate mitigation plan, which is really going to hopefully give, give us actions, items to reduce our regional greenhouse gas emissions. And so we went through where we're at on that process to get the, the Transportation Policy Board up to speed. And a, a big part of greenhouse gas emissions, of course, is how many trips are generated out of Thurston County. And for our county, our size, we actually have more trips than the average county. And that's because a lot of people commute out of Thurston County for, for jobs and everything else. And so we're going to be looking at, of course, how to combat, combat that. We also, they're going to look at, you know, there's some legislation that was passed this legislative cycle and we want to know how that's going to affect this report. And so we, we talked about those items. And we also went through a legislative session update and talked about some of the key legislation that was passed that affects transportation. So that is my report. And next up is Deputy Mayor.
So I gave my report on the Joint Animal Services Commission last council meeting. However, I did meet with the new Executive Director, Sarah Hock, Tuesday, April 30th. And this was a really great time to have a one-on-one discussion of expectations and just to get to know her. LOT met last evening, May 8th, and the first part of it was a work session. So we discussed the potential changes to cost of services. And previously, we had asked the Finance Director to bring us some examples of what we would, it would look like for changes to commercial and residential costs if they were separated from each other rather than both being based on the equivalent residential unit or ERU. And a consultant will be used to better define what rates would look like over a five or more period to equitably distribute costs or not, or maybe not even change the formula. That's what the consultant's for. The business meeting, we had a hearing on our surplus equipment and there were no public comments. So after the hearing, the board moved to approve the disposal of the list of surplus equipment in any legal manner that was beneficial to LOT. We also had a presentation on updates to the reclaimed water infiltration study, which has been going on for a while. And the first phase, water quality characterization, is complete. And field work for the second phase, Treatment of Effectiveness Evaluation, is also complete. And this included a tracer test during which inert tracers were added to the reclaimed water being infiltrated at the LOT's Hawk Prairie, Hawks Prairie Ponds and Recharge Basins, which is up off of Hogan Bay. A network of groundwater wells were then sampled for the tracers and for residential, I'm, I'm sorry, my voice is getting scratchy, residual chemicals. The information was used to determine where infiltrated water flows underground and how water quality changes over time. A draft report on the results has been completed and staff will talk, also talked about next steps to the study, which will look at risk. We then also had several presentations on current capital projects, including the Ultraviolet Disinfection Upgrades Project. And then after our meeting, we took a tour of the Ultraviolet Disinfection Project, which is pretty much complete. And the upgrades are really significantly more energy efficient as well as saving space. The Olympic Region Clean Air Agency also met yesterday, but in the morning. And we did a, a few things. We approved letters to be sent to our congressional representatives focusing on those on the Appropriations Committee, but also Congressman Heck and Senator Cantwell as well, asking them to encourage Congress to increase the state and local air grants for, by 82 million above the fiscal year 2018 levels. As it now stands, the administration's fiscal year 2020 EPA budget calls for clean air agencies to take a 33% cut, which is profoundly harmful for ORCA's ability to carry out its important public health responsibilities. Remember this, they check, monitor air quality, they make sure that there's education about what people's should do to make sure that they don't have problems with poor air quality. We also had a presentation on the updates to the gasoline facility rule. And the updates incorporate permit streamlining provisions to reduce permit, permitting time for industry and, and ORCA, incorporate best management practices, make sure the requirements meet current state and federal air regulations, and clearly outlines test requirements for gas stations. They would be required to install a Stage One Enhanced Vapor Recovery. And then after an active discussion of why the Notice of Intent is aimed, the new Notice of Intent is aimed at only those facilities with a storage capacity of 10,000 gallons of gasoline or more, rather than all stations. And, and all stations do have to register, but this is to comply with this Enhanced Vapor Recovery. It was explained that the stations with less than 10,000 gallons stored account for 1% of the VOC emissions or, or volatile organic chemical emissions, but are close to 17% of the total of registered stations. So if the proposed rules were installed for these smaller stations as well, the combined impact would only be reduced by about 0.4 reduction in VOC, volatile organic emissions. So then we went ahead and passed a motion to move the rule on to the Legislative CR2 filing. We opened a hearing on our 2018, 19, 20, 20 budget and it will stay open through the month. And at this time, we are basically in good shape, but over the five-year forecasted budget, there may be needing to take steps to make sure that we aren't dipping into our reserves to carry out our activities. And then lastly, the April, the April Air Quality Monitoring in Lacey, which covers Thurston County, had 30 days that fell in the good air quality range, so yay. So that's my report.
Thank you, Councilor Greenstein.
So I only have one report tonight and that is on Thurston 911, which met on May 8th. A couple of things there. We, we reviewed our first quarter financials and things are going very well. At this point, we are ahead of budget on revenue and below budget on expenses, so things are moving along well there. Most importantly, we had really good news that on May 7th, the governor signed into law the bill that we've had in front of legislature this year to allow for 911 centers to seek additional funding by a vote of the, of the people. That, that's been something that's been worked on for quite a long time. And that will provide, hopefully, when it goes before the public, the money to, to update the radio systems that we have here in Thurston County for emergency response. The current radio system for police and fire, as I've discussed with council many times, is not adequate. There are parts of the county where they have to get no radio service. And there are even buildings within the city of Lacey where the radios don't work inside those buildings. So it's a life and death situation, in my opinion. It's, it's critical for our police and firefighters that they have the ability to communicate. This will give us the ability and hopefully, at this point, the plan would be to go to the voters in this November. But that will require a resolution by the County Commission and several other steps before that happens. So we'll be back with more information on that. Couple other quick things from that meeting. We had budgeted $250,000 for repairs to the radio system in Yelm. We are getting that work done, but we're able to come in under budget. We're actually getting that done for just about $100,000, so less than half of what was budgeted. And then last, we have, we, we approved an update to our internal policies to bring them to current standards. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilor Hearn.
So tonight TCAT met, but I missed for my son's track meet. But with the council's permission, Malcolm Miller, the Director... But with the council's permission, Malcolm Miller, the director of the 5K Run Against Human Trafficking is here, and if with the council's permission, may I ask him to report on how the race went?
Please, come on up to the podium.
Thank you.
Okay, so we had our annual 5K on the 27th Saturday morning at Mountain View Church down in Tumwater. Going into the race, we had a lot of registrations. We ended up with over 350 people that day. All of them, pretty much everybody showed. We had at least 100 people donate who actually did not even come to the race. They just wanted to donate towards the cause. We had more volunteers than we thought we were going to have. We had extra volunteers. The day turned out really well. We were, a lot of donations, all the food was donated, all the, the only expenses that we had were shirts and banners and decorations. We raised over $27,800 in this event, and we were able to continue the youth empowerment program in Thurston County schools within the, you guys probably already know about the design of the program, is to teach kids the signs of trafficking and how to report trafficking. So we trained students and we trained teachers. And so, as we move this whole thing through the county, eventually, all of Thurston County will be trained how to recognize the signs of trafficking, and maybe we can get rid of trafficking in Thurston County as a whole, and kids will stop coming up missing.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That's great news.
May I say a word on TCAT?
Sure.
I would just like to applaud TCAT for what they do of having a program that actually takes preventative measures and moves upstream on such a serious issue within our community. So I'm very grateful that TCAT is within Thurston County.
Yeah, for sure. So, next is Councilmember Cox.
All righty. Community Action Council will meet on May 22 with Councilmember Stedman in attendance, we hope. Intercity Transit met on May 1. Much of the meeting was devoted to working on the 2020-2025 strategic plan. We got about halfway through that, so we'll continue that work at our May 15 meeting. We also had a presentation from architect Tim Ritchie about the exterior panels, the perforated metal panels that are going to be on the new building at the Olympia Transit It's a really neat concept. The, they wanted to complement the existing building, which has a rainforest theme, so they ended up taking, getting satellite, you know, view images of the rivers in western Washington, and then came up with kind of a stylized design that reflects the, how the, you know, the pattern of how the water moves through the rivers there. And so, it will be in this reflective material that shows through the holes, and you'll see this water flow. So it's pretty exciting. I think it's going to be a very attractive building. And the other piece of business we did was authorize the general manager to renew a security contract with Pacific Security to provide transit center, transit center security services, both for the Lacey Transit Center and Olympia. That contract is not to exceed $586,700. This is for a one, well, I guess a 19-month term, and then we have options to renew for one year four times if everything is working as it should be. Regional Planning Council met on May 3, and we provided final input and adopted the agency's public participation plan, which is very important to the work we do. We heard a report on the four-day integrated emergency management training for public employees and elected officials that a number of our staff participated in in late February. The event centered around multi-jurisdictional efforts to develop a community-wide approach to not just planning for the first day or two of a disaster, but how the community actually recovers over time. We talked about next steps, including the planning council's involvement in this process. And we were told by staff that FEMA was just absolutely blown away at the level of cooperation and coordination between the jurisdictions here in Thurston County. So we have something really special going on here, and hopefully, this will be a model for other counties to do. We also looked at regional transportation plan goals and policy, which the mayor has already discussed, and received a briefing on progress toward implementing the actions in the Sustainable Thurston Plan, with those actions where the regional planning council is designated as lead or co-lead, and on achieving key priority goals and targets. So we talked about next steps on that, and based on recommendations from staff, we leaned toward continuing to focus on priority goals and targets, especially in areas where there are opportunities to leverage key actions to achieve progress on meeting more than one goal or target. So we like the idea of building on successes and leveraging things to go forward. The AdHoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing met right before this meeting tonight. This group is currently made up of representatives from Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia, and tonight's discussion was primarily on the aspects that need to be considered as we're discussing a proposed regional homeless site, as well as a new spirit of cooperation with county government as we work together to meet the housing needs of Thurston County residents. And finally, the Health and Human Services Council will meet on Monday, May 13. This will be a half-day meeting, which will finalize the list of recommended grants for housing and basic needs moving forward. It's about, close to $5 million available, and we received applications totaling about, almost twice that. It was, I think it was about $8.4 million. So some hard decisions to be made, but we will come up with the final list to forward to county commissioners, who will hopefully bless it. And that's my report.
Great. We have reached the end of our agenda. And so, before we adjourn, I just once again like to welcome Councilmember Zeeman to the city council, and look forward to working with you. And we will have a work session next Thursday, and the following Thursday, we'll have another council meeting. And once again, the mayor's gala will be May 30, so get your tickets. And until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.